Neela Stevens.
Hi, I'm Tom Dove.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Hi, Cheryl Jones.
Hi.
Did you hear?
One on one?
I'm doing a bit funny. It's all pension humor.
So, roll call.
Break the seriousness. Tom is here.
Neo?
He's here. Neil's here. Michael? Michael's not here.
Michael's not here, so.
Tom. Tom, we're gonna officially seat you at the board of finance.
We're gonna call you an absurd board. Yeah, we're gonna call you.
Okay. But we got a quorum there.
So, our quorum is us two.
Right.
Okay, and the minutes from the last meeting, can I give approval?
It's just so moved.
Second.
There you go.
We're doing it, we're doing everything.
And we are in favor.
Okay, so the minutes are approved. Okay, this is a special meeting. We have other meetings during the year. This is Hooker and Hooker doing a presentation for us. And to talk about the OPEB trust, that is a specific type of topic for this meeting. So, they.
Well, we asked Ellen and Rob to come tonight to address the funded status of the OPEB trust. Looking back at how we did from July 1, 2021, because of the market gains, what would that do to the funded status? And then going forward, can we start pulling the funds out to pay retiree health benefits? So with that, they've already, Ellen and Rob, I shared your one-page summary that you gave from the valuation, but I think I'll let you take it from here. And just maybe explain this chart and anything else.
Sure, yep, thank you. Do you want me to start sharing it, or does everyone have it? You wanna look at it that way? What works?
Sure.
Share the screen.
All right, let's, let's see if I can do this here. Okay.
Perfect.
Yeah, okay, great, it worked, yay. You always get a little nervous with these things. Yeah, so as Diane had mentioned, so normally what we do is a valuation every other year, and then that develops the recommended contribution for the next two upcoming fiscal years. So, the last evaluation we completed was as of July 1, 2020. So, normally that would develop the contribution for the 21, 22 fiscal year, and then the 22, 23 fiscal year. So, it came up a couple of weeks ago, you know, if we could perhaps start re-measuring things in those interim years where we don't do a valuation to maybe reflect more updated asset information. And where we landed was rather than doing another full-blown valuation and moving to doing one every year, is that every other year in those interim years, we would do what we call an interim valuation report. So, basically, we take the participant data from the prior year, and we just roll it forward. So, we don't collect new participant data from the town. We just take the data as of the last valuation. We assume everything happened exactly as we would expect it to using our actuarial assumptions, and we come up with the liability one year later. So, that's what we did here for the liability. On the asset side, we did reflect the actual assets as of July 1, 2021. So, that's sort of the new information that's being reflected in this exhibit that you see here. So, what we're doing here is, as I said, we rolled forward the data a year to July 1, 2021. We use the actual asset values as of July 1, 2021. And we're coming up with perhaps a better, a better ADEC for the 22, 23 year, because we are reflecting those updated assets now. So, if you take a look, this shows the totals over here. We split it out by town and Board of Ed, but I think for purposes of this, we probably wanna focus on the total. So, here's the liability, 23.9, almost $24 million. The asset value is just the value in the, in your fund on July 1, 2021. So, that's the 20 million that you see here. Your unfunded amount is close to $4 million. And then the town's method for, essentially what you wanna do is you want your assets to equal your liability. So, there needs to be some mechanism to make that happen. And the town's mechanism to make that happen is to amortize it over, we're using 23 years in this exhibit. So, we're amortizing it over 23 years, which gives us a payment of $322,000. We add to that the normal cost piece of the contribution, which is the value of benefits that your active employees will accrue in the 22, 23 fiscal year. So, we add basically these two pieces together, and we come up with your recommended contribution, and then we adjust it for interest. So, your contribution here is 1.17 million. That's the recommended contribution for 22, 23. So, that is different than if you look in our July 1, 2020 valuation report, where we showed the, the recommended contribution was 1.48 million. So, it's coming down quite a bit, and that is just a result of the asset returns. The asset, I think, returned 28% from 2020 to 2021. So, reflecting those returns, those higher asset values, we come up with a lower ADEC than we had originally estimated with the 2020 valuation. So, this, first, I wanted to just sort of step through how we came up with our, I guess I'll call it a revised ADEC for 22, 23. As I said, it is coming down quite substantially versus the, the last number that we had given as a result of the, the asset returns. The plan is up to 83.5% funded now. So, that's how we determine the ADEC. Before we start the discussion on, you know, paying benefits from the trust and moving towards that, are there any questions on anything that we've gone over yet? I just wanna make sure everyone understands that before we move on to, I think, the second half of the discussion.
Can you just confirm again the amount of the difference between the new calculated ADEC and the one that would have applied had we not gone through the recount?
Sure, so the old one was 1,487,886.
Got it.
Close to 1.5 million.
And do most towns do just every two years, or do they do every year?
It's kind of a mixed bag. Some, it's, it's very common on the pension side to do every year. I think most plans that I work on are doing it every year now, a full valuation. We have some towns, cities and towns that do this interim valuation, and we also have some that do the, the every other year. I would say the every other year is more common on the OPEB side than it is on the pension side. But there are certainly municipalities that, that do it both ways. Rob, I don't know what your, your clients tend to do if they favor one versus the other.
I've seen what you were saying. On the pension side, a lot of them do do annual, the ones that I work on. I have one large one that does interim ballots. There's a ton that still do biennial. On the OPEB side, however, it's uncommon to see annual valuations. I think I can think of maybe one town where we do annual.
And Rob, is, is the reason for the difference, is it just random? Or is, is there, is there a rationale behind why?
I, I think.
Particularly in an OPEB context.
It, it's probably that OPEB valuations, they haven't been done as long for munis. And so, at the beginning, I think it was more of a hassle than anything else to get it completed, because you have to do it every two years for a GASB requirement. So, at the bare minimum, you have to do it biennially.
What is that?
Yes, yeah.
Two, two things should be noted. One is that now that we're going to prepare Hooker to do our, keep our database, right?
Right.
In order to have them do our, our estimates and stuff that Diane used to do by hand.
Yeah.
We're gonna have the data in there more currently.
Sure.
Which is important. Secondly, it would cost $20,000 more to do it every year than what we're doing. The fact, the data, I have one question about the data. When you look at the data, look at all employees, so those who are approaching retirement are in there, as well as, because you, you're gonna have some people approaching retirement, and you have some people dropping off. When people die, do their, their families stay on health insurance? Do those spouses?
They can, and we pay 100% if they stay on.
Right.
Yeah.
But the point, the point is by, by, you know, since I look at everyone, you have the people approaching retirement as well as the people in retirement in terms of your, your liability.
Yeah, but I guess, if I, and that's a very good point. Because Ellen, I thought I heard you say that when you're doing this interim calculation, you're taking the number of employees, right? In other words, when you value the liabilities, I think you are just assuming that that population from the prior date all just kind of unfolded the way you had predicted, but you, you weren't really drilling down to see if there were actual changes. Did I understand that right?
That's correct, yes. So, we take the, your active employees who will eventually be eligible for these benefits and your retiree population on July 1, 2020. And we don't update that for who really terminated and who maybe really passed away during the year. We just roll the data forward, and then when we do.
Yeah, I mean, for most years, I would expect there wouldn't be enormous difference. Particularly if the sample's large enough. Okay, so. And, and so we have this updated data. It's, it's got, right, I mean, obviously, in years, we don't enjoy a 20% return.
It'll work.
Yeah, don't worry about it.
Once you switch it, you gotta stake up.
Yeah, well, that's, that's the other thing, is you can't just flip and flop.
Right, right.
So, we're kind of making a systemic decision here.
So, I think there's three, we had talked to Ellen about looking at three different ways. Do we not do anything? Could we just continue doing the same? Do we look at paying 50%? Or do we look at paying 100%? And that's what Ellen could talk a little bit about for the OPEB part.
For purposes of invading the trust to pay current costs, as opposed to this decision, which is on its own discreet basis, is simply, how often are we reevaluating in order to calculate the ADEC?
This, this tells you, we were gonna have to contribute 177,000.
Right.
Are we gonna still do that?
Well, I think that's what we have to do.
Yeah, so probably we're gonna have to decide if we wanna do it. If we're gonna take some, take some money out of it.
But this, but if, if we didn't take anything out, we would reduce that 177 by making this change.
Based on these numbers, yes.
Yeah. We were limiting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right.
Right, I guess because our recalculated ADEC takes into account the monster year of the return.
Right, it's not only this return for July, it's also the return to date, because you calculated 87%.
87% was not to the, I didn't have a full liability.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
From it was a strict rollover, not.
So, these valuations, 23, 24 million dollars in July, it's a bit more since then.
Yeah, and the next.
It could go the other way, pretty soon.
And the number, they'll, the number, July 1 of 2022 is when they'll reset it. If I'm correct, they'll reset it for 23 and 24, based on the, the actuarial report from July 1, 2022. Is that right, Ellen?
Yeah, that's right, so.
Change if it increases again? Sorry, Ellen, if it increases again, that even helps it more, because the ADEC's getting lower and lower if the value increases again.
Which hurts. What if we had the opposite situation, it was down for you?
It could go up.
You're right there.
How would you feel about that? Would you? I'm sure, you guys. You know, how would you feel about that? Would you, would you feel like you wanna be more accurate than that and do a yearly review? Or would you end up saying, every day, I'll smooth everything out? Because we don't wanna change every year, right?
No.
So, I'm looking now, thinking, okay, statistically, my chances of it going south in the future is pretty good. Well, doesn't everything go, you know?
Well, the thing about retiree benefits, most people stay in retirement for quite a while, before they die, right? There's a certain inertia to retire. Right?
Right.
Yeah.
A body of rust. Yeah, I mean, it, it's certainly what that means is this number's gonna be hopping around.
Yeah.
Because you lose your smoothing effect.
Yeah.
This is someone that went to law school. They're not good numbers, but.
Oh, they only smooth pension.
Ellen, can you talk a little bit about the difference between a smoothing on the pension and the smoothing on the OPEB?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think this kind of plays really well into what you were just, just talking about. Yeah, so you're absolutely right. Right now, you're recognizing the gains of a 28% increase in the market. And, you know, it looks fantastic this year, but what happens if next year it goes down 28%? So, what we do on the pension side is we use, basically, we call it a smoothed value of assets or an actuarial value of assets, where we smooth gains and losses in the market over a five-year period. So, on the pension side, even though you did see those 28% gains there too, we're not recognizing all of those gains when we determine your ADEC. We're recognizing a fifth of those gains. So, it certainly is still going to help bring that ADEC down, but it works conversely. If the market goes down, say, 28%, your ADEC doesn't shoot through the roof. It goes up, but it doesn't go up as much as it would if we were fully recognizing all of those gains or losses in one year. Because what we're doing here on the OPEB side is we're just using the straight market. So, there can be a lot of fluctuation in your ADEC depending on what happens in the market from year to year. And I, you know, if you're moving sort of toward this approach of, you know, potentially eventually treating this as you do your pension trust, where you make your contribution to the plan, you pay your benefits out of the plan and sort of operate it, you know, more like you operate the pension, then I absolutely would recommend that we move to doing that same asset smoothing on the OPEB side to sort of even out your ADEC from year to year. And I don't know that, you know, you wanna make that change in an interim year, especially a really good year, when you had a great asset year. It might be more difficult to make that change. But perhaps next year, when we do the full valuation, that's something that we talk about doing and using that smoothing technique here to sort of level out your ADEC from year to year a little bit better.
Yeah. And, and so Ellen, this, this smoothing mechanic that's derived from pension practice, would that be market practice to use in an OPEB context? I mean, you were recommending it, but I just wanna make sure, like, you see the other towns, other folks that are reporting in this way similarly situated, which there, there's no problem doing that, but you just suggested, yeah?
Yeah, no, and, and this is only used for purposes of determining your ADEC. So, when you do your financial statements, those still are done on the market basis. It's the same with pension. You're still reporting your market value of assets in your financial statements. This is really just a technique for sort of eliminating as best we can the fluctuations in your ADEC. So, yeah, it's absolutely an approved method to use on the OPEB side. And I think we tend to recommend, we as actuaries tend to recommend it once a plan gets to, you know, a funding level where it makes sense, where you are actually contributing the ADEC. And, you know, that's a real number. It's not just a number on paper that you're looking at. I mean, we have some municipalities, we, we show them an ADEC, and they say, we're, we're never gonna make that. You know, it's just not realistic, but you're actually making that. So, it, it is a real number for you, you folks. So, I would absolutely recommend, and, and yes, to answer your question, it is other towns, other municipalities do that, yeah.
And so. Just to recap, so we would be looking to perhaps, we haven't decided yet, recalculate on the basis of what you described at the outset of this conversation, but to also potentially, perhaps down the road, adopt a smoothing mechanic as well. But perhaps only after we take advantage of the modest 20%.
Yes, yeah, so I think there are two decision points there. First, moving to the interim, and then second, using that smoothing technique, yeah. So, there are, there are two separate things. Even if we did stick with the biennial, biennial valuations on the OPEB, I would still recommend moving to the smoothing. I, I just think it makes a lot of sense.
But then, we can, we can decide the smoothing after this year's whatever. We can kind of calendar that for later. It, it sounds like a perfectly reasonable thing to do, my assumption.
Yeah.
Do it and get Michael to benefit it. So, I think that's a good suggestion, we can take it advice, put it ahead of the agenda, for one of our future meetings. We still have, you know, what do we do with, you know, we've gone from a hundred to ADEC of 1,468, 1,175. So, that's, yeah, I'm not good with the numbers, 300 and so on. Bank that statement, even before we discuss whether or not we wanna go into the trust phase.
Yeah, I, I think we need to have sort of a recommendation, what are you thinking about this?
Yeah.
Well, in order to look at your budget, though.
Yeah, that, that's what I was gonna ask, if you keep weight, it's not gonna go on this year, right?
What's not gonna go this year?
Any kind of adjustment in terms of.
The ARPA would need to make a decision tonight if they want to use the funds through OPEB to pay over time.
Getting to the goal, which is to invade their funds, in basic sense, making.
To use a portion of.
That's what the fund is for.
I know, but we wait to apply it, and we may not make the timing of the, of the wire.
Well, I suppose, I suppose the board can ask to make adjustments even. Can they make this kind of adjustment even after the town council?
Can you just do this in the middle of the?
I think if, once they, once it's in your budget that's been adopted by the town council, I think that means you're committing to put that, like, you're gonna put 177 in the trust. And it's, it's a board's likely, the board of land can make changes to the.
Right. Can make changes up until March 1st.
No.
Maybe Ellen can talk about what the recommendation would be for them.
Yeah.
Ellen, maybe you can talk about the difference between doing a 50% or doing the 100% or not doing anything at all, and what those differences will look like.
Sure, yeah. So, you know, when is the right time to start using your trust? It is, there's no single right time. You know, I think there's a lot of different factors that go into the decision. I mean, the plan is 83.5% funded right now, so it, it is pretty well-funded. You also, I just wanna make sure that I do mention that if you do decide to go down the path of paying benefits out, out of the, the trust, just make sure you also loop in your investment advisor. You know, it, it could potentially change the way that they allocate assets. They might have to have more cash available. You just wanna make sure the cash flows aren't too disruptive from an investment standpoint. So, I, I just wanna make sure I, I mention that as well. But one of the things that we would look at, you know, if you look at, so the way you'd handle it right now is you pay your benefits outside of the trust. So, again, if everything comes to fruition that we're predicting will, then your benefits are about 1.31 million dollars for the 22, 23 fiscal year. So, operating the way you do now, you would pay your 1.31 million out directly to participants. Now, your ADEC for the year, because of those great asset returns, is just under 1.2 million. So, what that means is that the 1.3 you paid out, that counts towards your ADEC, because it, it's money coming from the town, you're not using the trust for it. It's basically a town contribution to your plan. You're just sort of circumventing, putting it into the trust and taking it back out of the trust. So, the way the numbers look right now, if you were to continue that approach, then you're basically overfunding your ADEC by a little over 150,000 or so. And so, kind of one of the things that we look at as maybe a natural point in time for starting to pay at least a portion of benefits out of the trust would be if your ADEC is less than your benefit payments are expected to be. So, you know, you could potentially say, well, the ADEC is 1.17 million, so you're going to pay 1.17 million to participants directly from the town to cover your ADEC. And then anything additional above and beyond that, you could pay outside of, out of the trust. That would be one approach. Basically, you want to make sure that the benefits you pay directly to the town, or, or to participants from the town, plus any contributions you make to the plan, equal your ADEC for the year, which is the 1.17. As long as you, you are, you know, making sure that you're hitting that ADEC, then from an actuarial standpoint, I think you're still moving in the right direction. Your fund is still growing, because you're getting, you know, we're assuming that you're getting that 6.75% return each year. So, you, and then there's a, a lot of other, you know, iterations of that that you can do as well, depending on how you wanted to structure it, you know, what you wanted to pay for the town, if you wanted to make a contribution to the fund directly. You know, a, a lot of different ways to do it. But I would say, really, the bottom line, I think, is that you wanna make sure the benefits that you pay out from the town, plus any contributions you put into the fund, cover your ADEC.
And what are we, what are we getting for this? You know, no one's citing us having 80% or is saying, well, if I'm not really getting credit, right? So, you must have some reason why this is a good time to do this, or?
Well, we're looking for help with the budget. But on the other hand, I thought you said zero, half 50% or the whole thing.
Right.
That's a little different from what she's describing.
It is basically, well, it's, it comes into play in regards to the difference between the benefits and the ADEC, and then how much the town is willing to put in. And you can do it versus your 0, 50, or, or 100. It's just if you wanna keep within the, the value of the ADEC, so you don't put any more above. So, right now, we didn't do anything, we won't put that 177 in. So, if, if our ADEC is 1,174 right now, we don't have any ADEC. And just correct me if I'm wrong, Ellen, we don't have an ADEC right now for, just for your 23, the rates.
But we put it in the budget, as I said.
But if we, if we took it out, and then you take the difference between those two numbers, 135, that brings you to 300 plus. That's a number that you can say the trust can pay, because it's not going above the 1174. That the trust can pay on our behalf, which has a budgetary effect to us. And then that's kind of the pilot year.
So, we don't have to tax for that difference?
Exactly.
That's the point.
That's the point.
So, that's the same.
So, what's the budgetary effect?
It could be, it could be about 200,000 to 300,000 dollars.
177 for sure, because that's what the ADEC.
That's what the ADEC is right now, we don't need that, that takes that out.
Right.
That doesn't have, and, and that was our number. That does not affect this, because the ADEC currently stands below our benefits.
Right, I was gonna say.
That differential.
Right, isn't the, the part I'm still trying to work through in my mind is how this operates when the ADEC exceeds the expected.
Then we owe.
Then we owe.
Then we owe a higher limit, then we owe an ADEC. That's why money is not in the trust fund.
Right.
Then we owe the higher ADEC. So, that valuation.
Well, there's, I guess, in that scenario, there would be no budget savings.
Right, right, yeah.
We're good to it.
The other approach we talked about was funding it.
But yes.
Yeah, but Todd talked about borrowing money to fund it, as opposed to just pay, make a payment from the general fund, which some of you is overfunded, into, to top this up to 100%. And then say, okay, now we're at 100%, you're gonna pay the benefits.
Now pay the benefits.
Yeah, that's.
And then do the smoothing.
I mean, that's what, that's what the trust is for. These people don't work for us anymore. They, they were paying their expenses.
Yeah.
Why pay the taxpayers, charge the current taxpayers for people that used to work for us?
And there are other communities, Darian's, doing, Elgin's, doing this. We're not the only town.
That's the point. What do you have, what do you have the trust fund for? To pay the benefits for people that don't want to work for us?
Want a healthier fund, funding balance right now.
Yeah. No, it's not major, it can page.
And I don't think that the credit, credit.
No, but it is, hopefully, it's building, and then if you bring in that smoothing, so next year is a loss, it's 1511.
That is a good thing.
Right.
Oh, what would, what does it cost, $3 million to top it up to 100%?
39.
39.
39. And that could have a significant difference on both sides, which would be.
But you're gonna look to use your general fund.
Well, I mean, right, every year, we're, we're giving four year or two there to bring down the bill rate.
But the total, the total, the total retired benefits across these 900,000 dollars a year.
For the town, both sides. And the town is 1.3.
1.3. So, we get that monkey out our back, because that's what this is for.
Yeah. Does a bargaining agreement specify where funds are gonna come?
No, we just have to basically, you know, the girl.
So, did you have a more scenario of two and three, or would you be?
We'd, we'd lower our liability and increase our ADEC. I mean, our percent funded, sorry, our pension funded, increase our ADEC.
Among the things you could use the fund ballots for would be to help the budget, because you do it for a $4, $5 contribution. Among the things you could use the fund balance for would be to help the budget, because you do it for a four, five, eight dollar contribution. Another way to do it would be to cre- decrease our benefit expense every year, like, or give the ADEC fully funded like Wilton did. Right, there's options you can use to help the budget, especially with people who no longer work here.
Right.
When it comes to a policy, that's, first, why are you doing it? It's really for what the numbers are bad, but, but, you know, are we really achieving?
There should come a day, on our current course, where you say, you have to start using it.
Well, sure, I mean, I think that makes sense, right?
Well, I mean, looking at the one point, the three point nine, and saying, well, it's a big number, we're gonna take our fund balance. But if you think about it, we're already taxing people one point three between the board and then us. So really, you're putting in two, you net it so that it, from your fund balance, because you're drawing your fund balance anywhere because you're paying in the budget. So it looks like a larger number, but when you think about how much you're actually paying over here, the one point three, to put that in, to try and get to that fully funded, and then you're just moving, you're somewhat protected over the five year period.
Right, I guess, I guess this three twenty-two is the amortization over the twenty-something years.
Right.
Right, so, so that is already a cost factor. Because we're not at a hundred percent.
Exactly, we would say that, yeah.
Now, of course, there's an opportunity cost for the three point nine that's in the general fund, they go over here. Right, uh, it, it can't be used to find out the bill rate or whatever, but it is actually serving a purpose here. And that, but I agree.
Can, can I, can I ask a question? Sorry, guys. I, I'm trying to listen. Is it true if we fund three point nine million from the general fund, so it's fully funded, are we saying we don't have to contribute one point three million annually as long as it's fully funded?
As long as it's fully funded.
Look, we'd still have an ADEC, right, Ellen, we still have an ADEC, but it would be smaller.
So if, yeah, but if it were fully funded, your amortization, the amortization piece, this three twenty-two would go away, but you'd still have the normal cost, which is the, the cost associated with your active employees who are still accruing these benefits. So you'd still have this for an ADEC, so it would be, certainly be smaller, but it, there would still be one.
So, okay, so just to be, Ellen, this is helpful. So if we pay three point nine million in general fund, we only save, uh, uh, estimated about three hundred thousand a year. We don't save one point three million a year.
Right, three hundred twenty-two thousand for the next twenty-three years, you would save.
Right.
If you stay, if the value of the fund stayed the same too, because if you have the returns above the six seventy-five.
True.
Anything above the six seventy-five is actually now considered real income that can bring the ADEC down even more. So if you had another good year, you put up a bag here too, when you have that other good year, you put in your five-year smoothing, that's actually gonna bring down that normal cost, because at some point, your fund is just gonna be so over, overfunded, uh, which has happened to a couple of towns already. And their ADEC has almost disappeared.
Right. Okay, that's, that's helpful to know, thank you.
Right, I see that.
So did we finish, where, where the, was the recommendation, was there gonna be a tail?
Yeah, you're right, so just that. Could I just, just something that Cheryl pointed out, Michael, when you say about the one point three, we're putting that in now. So.
From the town general fund.
From the town, and, and from the board and the town, we're putting in the one point three. If we got to the point of it being fully funded where we can actually pay the full amount out, that goes away. The amortization would go away. We would still have an ADEC, but it won't be close to what we're currently paying out.
Sounds pretty good to me.
And I, Ellen, please correct me if I'm wrong, but that number disappears for us from a, from a budgetary perspective on the benefit payments.
The one three?
With the one three, because it's funded, so you're shifting it.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah, you're shifting it a little bit. You're taking away the one three, but you'll have maybe a slightly higher ADEC of the seven hundred or less.
Right.
But you saved, uh, uh, even half or more of that, because of.
Yes, that's the point, right.
I just wanted to make sure.
Wait, wait, so, all right, I just want, okay, so that's a little different than what I understand. So if we pay the three point nine million, we don't have to budget the one three because the ADEC, you'll be able to cover a lot of that through just the earnings on the, on the assets? Is that what you're saying?
You're still gonna have an ADEC. So right now, if all said and done, we actually pay one point five million out the door, one point three in benefits, and one's a hundred and seventy-seven in ADEC.
See, but, but the ADEC is from the currently working people who you anticipate in the future, you're gonna have to begin to pay. The one point three is paying out the door to retirees only.
But we'll still have it, we'll still have a portion of an ADEC to pay, to off that dollar amount.
Because that's for the people approaching retirement.
Right, and it could look like our ADEC increases, when it's really, it's increasing slightly because we've taken all these other things. But you've just lost one point three, one, you know, on this, on the.
The one one three, yeah, is not, we have a general fund.
Out of the trust, and we'd still have some sort of an ADEC, and hopefully the fund will equal, um, and, and then it's smaller, because there's that normal cost every year.
So we will save the one three, is that correct? We will save the one three?
And saving on the town side.
Well, yeah, so, just with the, with the numbers that are on the page, what you're saying is if we were to take money from the general fund, get rid of the three point nine million shortfall.
Yeah.
So we would save the three twenty-two every year for twenty-something years, right?
Yes.
Because that goes away, right, and what you're saying is the million three is now gonna be paid out of the trust fund.
Correct, not out of the general.
Not out of current expenses and taxing the residents.
Right.
So you're gonna, again, the verb, the variable majority, but we're gonna go into the hundred percent funded trust to pay the million three in expense. And so then our ADEC under these numbers would be seven hundred and change?
Worst case scenario, it sounds like. Ellen, am I correct?
Yeah, I, I think that's all correct. So you're saying you fund it fully a hundred percent. So your, your ADEC essentially becomes your normal cost, which we'll say is the, the eight hundred. Um, the amortization goes away, and then you're gonna pay benefits out of the trust, so the one point three would be coming out of the trust, and then you would be making the eight hundred in contribution, so.
At, at the current value of the fund, if the value of the assets went up, it would change?
If the value of the assets went up, yes, then the eight hundred would come down, yes, yeah.
It, it did go down, would you have to then, uh, bring it back up to a hundred percent at a certain point in the future?
The ADEC could change, but the suggestion was that we could possibly bring in smoothing at some point. That would, I think you said one-fifth of that loss, it would be coming in one, uh, and each year, so we'd give you a comment.
One thing, one thing you need to consider too is, you know, our average family is like twenty-two thousand dollars for, for their premiums, of which they pay a portion, more than that, cops are thirty-three thousand dollars, right?
Yeah.
So the point is, our retirees, those who go, those who go to, to sixty-five and get on Medicare, we put them at the ambulance, which, which saves us a lot of money compared to what we used to do, where we were effectively paying the premium rate for both the employee and the employer at this full twenty-two to thirty-three thousand dollars a year. People that catch us are the cops. A cop who retires at fifty-five, we got ten more years before he gets to Medicare. Or the teachers, some of the teachers who retire early, right? We're paying for them until they get to Medicare, so.
Sixty-five, I mean, we're paying.
Right, most of our town employees go to sixty-five.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, but the kid, the people that kill you are the cops and the teachers who die, who die early. So, so, and that's, that's where we're paying that increased amount. Once, it could, we made this switch over to Amworth several years ago. We used to, we used to have the retirees paying and subsidizing the current employees by paying ridiculous high rates. Right, Amworth is, is much more like Medicare.
Medicare supplement.
Medicare supplement, we're buying in, in a group basis.
Yeah.
So just understand the dynamics of who we're paying for. When it comes to these retirees, partially the cops who kill us in their fifty-five or fifty-seven, and they retire early. And they stay on our plan, even though they go to work someplace else.
All right, Ellen, anything else that you wanted to say before we deliberate?
No, I, I don't think so. Um, I think, I think we've covered everything from, from our perspective.
Ellen, if they do decide, uh, to change that smoothing for next year, when would they need to notify you? So we are happy to make that decision.
When we get to the twenty twenty-two valuation, we can run it both ways, uh, with the smoothing and without it, um, and then show it to you, so you can see the impact that it has, and you can make a decision, you know, based off of how the numbers look.
It's gonna help the budget.
Well, they're not gonna be at the meeting tonight, so it's, yeah, so it's, our back will make you, right?
Right.
Are you gonna make a recommendation?
Well, there should be a proposal, we have, you know.
Well, that's, that's the point, though.
I assume that you were making a proposal.
Well.
All right, you're, I mean, that's your.
Yeah, right, it has to come from you, right?
I'm just reading the room.
The whole point of this discussion is not academic.
No, no, exactly.
It's really designed to have a budget effect.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Well.
We have written the funding, what?
Yeah, I printed that, that one.
What's your, what's your fund balance?
What's my exercise level? Oh, I don't have that right now.
Well, we're not, we're not recommending the, you know, tapping it up to a hundred percent. That would be an option.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, I, I have to.
But, I, right, so I think what we're saying is.
You might do that over a couple of years. I mean, do a million dollars a year, and in three years from now, you would like you did it.
Right. But at least it, at least it's a start, I think, at some point, using this trust, whatever number you guys.
Yeah, you can change your mind.
I think, right.
Can you change your mind?
But, right, we can kind of, like, work towards reducing that shortfall so we have the option. That might be a way to go. I think for the House today is whether or not we're gonna adopt this sort of off-rhythm recalculation to save the freedom grant, is that what?
Well, that, see, that's one seventy-seven. The recount, the recount is, so, right now, I introduce you having done July first, twenty twenty-two anyway. So this one coming up is a scheduled one that has to be done, because the last one that was done was, unless I'm, I'll make sure, the last one was done is twenty twenty. So the second year is now coming up, so it has to be on this July first. Then the interim one would be July first of twenty-three, but that's the decision if you wanna do it that year. We have to do it this year. There's not a choice on this year. The choice for this year would be when you wanna do that, if you wanna bring in the smoothing, do you wanna, with the two scenarios that they'll put together for July first, which one do you wanna use?
Yeah, that, that smoothing one I get is, we're gonna put it in an agenda of.
Of future time.
Right, into next fiscal year to take effect for, and we get.
Yeah.
But, but, but for today, for tonight, aren't we kind of saying, look, it's every two years, the two years is gonna be up this coming July, but for purposes of trying to settle the budget, it's gonna go effect.
Yeah.
We're gonna see whether or not we would take the recommendation of Ellen and Rob, which is, let's take into account this, what I again call an off-rhythm recalculation of assets and liabilities in order to have a real budget effect, which is a savings, because of the monster twenty-eight percent return.
Right.
So we will do that, we'll put ahead in the agenda for maybe adopting a smoothing after the official recalculation evaluation.
Set motion.
I don't know. This is sort of, this is somewhat.
But I think it's two parts, because if you adopt this, you could decide, okay, we're not gonna put in the one seventy-seven. And then I think the second part is, if you don't put in the one seventy-seven, are you also then going to use the OPEV to pay the retiree benefits? So I think it's two parts.
Part, part of the, part of the.
Correct, right, yeah, well, a part, like three fifty, rather than with the number.
Yeah.
Which one makes our, what makes our numbers look better? Like, say, what does it feel like about doing both?
I think it's a two-step, you're just two steps, adopt this interim.
Right.
Look back to, to take your monster twenty-eight percent, and then you.
And then we'll be on that cycle automatically going forward, every year with, rather than every other year.
Yeah.
And we will, uh, then adopt a smoothly effect.
But tonight, it's a two-step decision.
And then you pay the difference between the.
Between the, the million three and the million one.
Correct.
Bottom there.
Yeah, right, that would come out of the trust now. Plus, we wouldn't have the budgetary factor of one seventy-seven, so it's twelve sixty-one, six grand, all together.
I mean, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I guess, um.
I, I'm not seeing the headline news, but, you know.
The headline news would be say, if that's a million dollars into the OPEV budget, we can tap it up over three years. Then you, then you, then you start relying upon the trust.
Honestly, I don't really know how, you know, where we're gonna land in terms of how much we're gonna buy down. So, like, I don't know what else.
But that's a sep- that's a separate transaction altogether, right?
Well, but again, this is all, how many things are claiming under the unrestricted portion of the general fund, right? Those things that are already called upon, how much latitude do we have, you know, where, where do we need to go? So, you know, I could see certainly, you know, sharing the fact that we are looking into and might start a process of chipping away at that through contributions from.
And that's, that's a decision that we're fast could make.
Yeah.
Like, later on.
Yeah, we can certainly make that recommendation further in the year, we don't need to do that right.
Yeah, yeah.
Does that make sense?
It's okay. We have a lot of money and we don't know the budget outcome yet, and so I'd like to know those things before I look at the magnitude of this decision being made. Now, I think, look, I think.
Well, Todd, Todd's looking for a couple, a couple few million dollars.
Yeah.
So how do you find that?
Yeah.
No, we're just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I almost wanna put it as a column to the right, you know, in reserve if you need it.
Well, I, I have to say, right, and, and again, I'm anything but the expert on this, right, I'm, I kinda feel like I'm, I'm just trying to absorb this like you're a fire engine, but what I would say is.
But you do it so beautifully with the legalese.
Legalese, that's right. You know, from my perspective, the only downside here is you're gonna get, um, kind of a jumpiness to this, because you're measuring it up a year.
Yeah.
But we have a way to work against that by having this moving. If you decide to do that later, which is fine. And to be perfectly honest, in, in some sense, I do think employing the eighty-three percent funded trust in order to help us with current expenses is the smart play. Right, because that way, we're using those funds as a way of avoiding or minimizing the need to tax current residents, et cetera, to meet these obligations. And to me, that's what they want us to do.
That's what the budget board.
I, 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 you know, what, I mean, you, there, there's nobody jumping up and down and saying, oh my God, you know, yeah, you could do that, but, you know, like, there's no, right, Simon, just, right, it's, it seems like we're kind of totally within our rights to do this. Um, our advisors have helpfully suggested to us that other communities are doing this, and it's kind of right down the pipe of what you can do. And so, you know, honestly, let me claim to say, you know, I don't, I don't see enough reason not to say that this doesn't make sense.
And just for, um, Ellen, while you're still on, we also had asked them to look at the pension moving every year. And we were looking at a contribution of one point seven. Now they're coming back saying the contribution could be one point one. So that's a whole nother discussion.
When is that discussion gonna be?
Well, I think that's something that the board of fundings will have to, Ellen's gonna get us.
That sounded.
Right, but, I mean, collectively, but collectively, I think on both of those, it benefits.
And that's not our task, is, is that?
It would be.
It would be.
But there was nothing to bring tonight.
We don't, we don't, we're still together, so we could be asked for some.
Would, would we know, how soon would we know that?
Ellen, you thought we could have those numbers by?
Yeah, that number would get folks' attention.
Yeah, our numbers are done. Our numbers are final. I just don't have them in the final um, report, but I will send you Cheryl tomorrow, the exhibits that back up that number. Yeah, I think it was one, I wanna say one point oh nine million it came down to with the, the increased assets.
Well, would they have another meeting on the pension part to do that? Does that have to be an ARPA recommendation?
Did you mean on the pension side?
Yeah, yeah, before you finalize the budget?
Yeah, I mean, that would, it would be better to have all those things in perspective.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I, I, I'm, look, we're, we're all coming here to finish the budget. Anybody that's spent these forty-five minutes, I'll be, whatever, another budget.
Right, but that won't be a long conversation.
That would be, yeah, that should be.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess, the, the framework would be the same, the numbers.
Yeah, right, exactly. I need to jump them all, because they have to start supporting my.
Can I just ask, hey, Michael, you, do you have any, uh, problems with what we were saying here, or? Because I think largely, and correct me if I'm wrong, we might just preview where we're headed with this and tell them we're going to visit the same idea with a pension and come back with a combined recommendation, does that make sense?
That's a very rational group.
Okay.
Yeah, that ma- that makes sense, I want to, I don't want to prejudge the general fund and what we need to use it for and decide to lock it in here until we see all the other needs, so I agree, Tom.
Here's a full choice.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Ellen, thank you, Ross.
Hi.
Good everyone.